I put my name in the spirit of flag of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. First by legislator Twist, second by legislator Walpole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, as far as resolutions go today, what I'd like to do is do a consent agenda on everything as far as government, public safety, EDP, health, infrastructure, and finance. Is there any objections?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to do so, and just note that what's being passed up to you now will be the amended version of what passed as amended through public safety. Nothing changes.
Okay, I have a first by legislator Walber, second by legislator Walpole. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, okay, let's go back to, we're gonna go back to human services. We have a resolution on the table. I'm looking for a motion to bring it off the table.
Take the motion to bring that resolution which pertains to a case.
According to who has said like this?
Clerk's in fact is off the table.
Okay, that first by legislator Walber, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's off the table. If you're speaking with our head of human services, we're going to amend this resolution to do on, as the case by case basis comes along. So I do need a motion to do the one position from clerk to typist. Their senior typist, Steve. The typist typist, from clerk to typist. Okay, I have a motion from legislator Twist, second by legislator Walpole.
For the currently vacant one, right?
For the current vacant, for the current vacant position that is there. Any discussion on this? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much.
It was on the amendment.
Yeah, oh, right, as amended, thank, we talked about that. And now as amended, all in favor? Yeah, I need a motion as the amended, first by legislator Hall, second by legislator Lockwood. On the amended resolution. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you. Okay, let's address, we got HS1, resolution authorizing the term of legislation to enter into agreement with Swoyo County Opportunities Common Right Program. First by legislator Walber, second by legislator Walpole. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much. HS5, resolution authorizing budget modification, additional hours, employment and training staff for able-bodied adults without dependent children, supplement nutrition assistance program. First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Hall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much. Okay. Vacancy review. Julie, you're up.
All right. How did that? It's the only thing I know, they're in the kind of part-time vacancies for the resignation and a backfill, kind of part-time.
You wanna move to the block?
Yeah. There's more than that.
You've got backfill, there's the two.
Well, a backfill to the.
For the.
Part-time, no benefits, and then there's a resignation appointment with that.
Okay. Second number. I have a first, the block. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
From the health department, formerly known as the public health assistant, is retirement, which will now be reclassified as approved to public health technician.
Make a motion for a question.
Okay, first, I got a first by legislator Walber, second by legislator Walpole. Carrie?
No, I don't think I've ever done that. I just answered my own question. I found the answer, yeah.
Okay. Is there any others on that, or?
No.
Didn't hurt that, I'm pretty important. Oh, there we go, thank you. So, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
Okay, highway is a, the equipment operator to the resignation, medium equipment operator for a backfill for that position, and then also a resignation of a medium equipment operator.
Okay, the movement is a block.
Okay, second. So first, the movement is a block by legislator Walber, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
At the sheriff's department, you have a patrol officer that resigns.
Okay, first by legislator Walber, second by legislator Hall. Any discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
I said DFS, they're a senior service worker, due to retirement, and also backfill for an employment specialist.
Okay. Are we adding the aid on this?
Oh, the one that was the emergency service, okay.
Yes, I thought, what does that go, we can add that on here? Okay. Yes, and I, with this, yes, this is the, the orange, the aid driver, the aid.
Case worker aid. Case worker aid.
Case worker aid.
Case worker aid.
Right. They have four different types now.
Right. Okay. Okay, yes, movement is a block by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Twist. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
All right, at the county clerk's office, there's a senior motor vehicle clerk, it's a temporary position, the employee is out due to an unpaid leave of absence, and that would be a temporary, lead to a temporary backfill to a motor vehicle clerk. There's also a senior motor vehicle clerk due to retirement, and then a motor vehicle clerk for a backfill of that position.
Got a first, the movement is a block by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Lockwood.
When we say temporary, what are we talking, six months, a year, two years?
So the, the one senior position that is out on leave, I believe she's out.
Oh, they're all medical.
They're all medical. Correct, correct.
And unfortunately, just a sidebar note, I was at the BME in Oswego Tuesday, and you could hear all the scuttlebutt between the people behind the counter because that person was retiring.
Yeah.
Just, just like this happened over here.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big.
Yeah, they said that was gonna be.
It's a big one, so we're, we've got some people internally that we're ready to promote, but in order to really make this all work, I need that.
The backfill.
That backfill behind the temporary one, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I have a first and a second, any, any questions for our county clerk? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and the county clerk's office is in the present county attorney to get a resignation.
Yeah.
Make a motion.
We have a first by legislator Walber, second by legislator Hall. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Still me. Still me. So included in your packet, there's a bunch of reports that we report on monthly with employee count and the current up-to-date savings as of February 21st is $404,065.86. Currently, as of that date, there are 49 vacant positions. There's a listing, obviously, of our exams that we have scheduled, and there's ones that we're waiting to receive results. And also, there is a year on stamp shot for our 2019 activity department, or part-wide in our department, so, I mean, just to give you an idea, we're still kind of on par with the amount of exams that we gave, from 18 to 19, but we did get about $3400 more in exam fees, but that's based on uniform services. We gave correctional officer and patrol, the exam fees are more for those. We did also have to keep track of our director facilities exam that we give every four years at the state, that they get that, but we are responsible to keep track of the candidates that apply. So there are over 1,200 candidates statewide that each jurisdiction has to keep track of for the rest of the facility. We process the EO report, that was every, it's on odd years, so that's a huge tool that our office takes care of, and also along with our inner report that we do every year for civil service purposes, so.
So you're, you're providing part of it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, I have a, we've received some really good news yesterday, I just wanted to share, just to, you know, I like to share positiveness, but, um, the state, about two to three years ago, at a civil service, or a personal conference that I went to, announced that they are gonna be conducting technical assistant reviews for every jurisdiction in the state, and we just weren't sure when our number was gonna be up, basically, so I took that information, brought it back to our office, explained what exactly it consisted of, hammered down on, you know, how our data was to be handled and entered in. So last spring, our number was up, so we had, I submitted our copy of our rules, and also it consisted of a copy of our employment histories of every employee currently at that, that are active at that time, and also not just of the county, but also all of our schools, towns, and villages, so a lot of records. And we just received notice last, or yesterday, that not one discrepancy was found in the employment history records. They also noted in that it was a breeze to handle our records compared to other jurisdictions, and that my staff has done a great job maintaining records, so.
Congratulations.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, it's, it's a big deal, and the only discrepancies that they found in our rules, it wasn't nothing that had to do with our current rules, it was more of their ends, where they, we removed it on our part, but they just removed it in their rules, so that was really the only discrepancy, so, good.
Well, congratulations. Good business. Your staff, congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent. Anything else, Julie, you go ahead?
Uh, well, I guess I can bring up, through DFS, there was a group created with commissioners and HR directors and other jurisdictions around the state that have come together to, I guess, look at caseworkers, retention, recruiting issues, and to see what other really, what other jurisdictions have been doing. So apparently, Swoyo County has been above par, really, and really setting precedent of what other jurisdictions want to follow, so I have been asked, along with the deputy commissioner, to participate on a discussion panel for this next conference in June, so, it's, it's stuff.
You're giving us a, a blessing, I'm enjoying that.
Yeah.
Interesting. Very good. Okay, our treasurer is not with us this month, so we have his next M Y. Robin, what do you have for us?
Oh, well, I have to, I don't know. I have the sales tax number, I'm, sorry it has to be in the fair bad news, but we're down $904,000. That's why I didn't come, yeah.
Julie, Robin, is it?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm just the, I'm just the.
Don't show the message here.
Yep. Uh, this is a spreadsheet that goes along with that, we, so far this year, received $6,303, again, down, down $904,000 from last year. This graph, this spreadsheet is how we have to report it for the modified accrual system, so basically, the state requires us to, the first three and a half payments that we receive in 2020 is actually supposed to be allocated back to 2019. On this, on this page, we're up, actually, we're down, let's see, 3,216, so, you know, if you like this page better. Depending on, you know, depending on where we're at. Our capital reserve analysis, we're at $7,908,612, this is a regular capital reserves. Didn't realize I had to click, all right, here's our OTAS reserves. 51,266 left.
So where are we with those, Mr. Chairman? I can do that and everything now, I mean.
We're pretty close, and we're, we're allocated 20 of that next, next week, so we got 31,000 left. Nearly all the projects have closed, and that money's gone back into, the reserves are supposed to be, so we got about 31,000 that we can put into an eligible project in a little bit.
And here is the spreadsheet that shows both of those reserves, OTAS and regular. And this is our resolution we have, I believe, for you, do you want me to speak about it?
No.
It's okay.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
There you go, we already discussed it, sorry.
Okay. And thank you for your kind support.
Thank you. Thank you, Robin, appreciate it. Now, the heavy news.
Oh.
Yeah.
That doesn't sound good.
$900,000 down, don't get us anymore.
Oh, it's gonna, it's not gonna get any better if you, thanks to, no. Yes. No, thanks. Thanks to Phil relating the information, how's that? Okay.
Okay. Just wanted you to have a chance to see that. Last time we met, last month, I gave you some figures, what the impact to the county would be if the governor's Medicaid proposals were adopted by the budget, or in the budget. Since that time, the 30-day amendments have come out, and there was a change to one of those proposals, if you remember, there's four, basic, one was reconvening the Medicaid redesign team to try to change Medicaid in ways to save counties and state money. Two, the 0% Medicaid cap, that cap that went in 2015, that means we don't pay anything more than what we ever paid in 2015. You gotta, in order to be protected by that, you have to stay under the property tax cap. Second, your local district has to control the growth of Medicaid costs and keep them below 3%. And that ignore the fact that we don't control those costs. The third is, he wants to sweep and keep federal reimbursements to us that relate to Medicaid, it's called EFMAP. And that is federal money that's given to the counties to help offset some of our costs, the state feels that they're entitled to keep that, and that's what he has proposed. What changed in the 30-day amendments is that 3% growth cap is now gone, replaced by what they're calling a floating Medicaid spending target. I don't like the word floating. That means they can change that percentage target from year to year, and we don't know what that's gonna be, we don't have a clear understanding how they're gonna calculate it. Could be less than 3%, could be more than 3%. So that's, you know, not necessarily good news, that it went in that direction. Better news is that the NISEC staff, that we are a member of the Association of Counties, they've contacted every single state senator, both sides of the aisle, upstate and downstate, not a single one is for any of these Medicaid proposals. Does it mean that it's not gonna happen, because the governor often gets what he wants, but none of them support it. Second, and more importantly, this component that involves federal money, this week, the NISEC staff and some other county representatives are in Washington, meeting with the entire New York State delegation, the House of Representatives and senators, educating them on this EFMAP scheme, because it's our convention that the state cannot intercept federal monies that are intended for the counties, and they're getting a good reception on that, so what's happened now is our federal representatives have made aware of how New York State is handling this federal Medicaid program of the financial, and raising questions about it. Lastly, or not lastly, but there is an advocacy effort underway that's pretty, becoming more and more intense. In your packet was an analysis that I wrote that's been circulating around the state. What I passed out today is a news release we are doing on the impact to Swoyo County, and copies of some of the advocacy tools that NISEC has produced, which you can get at this website, mysec-medicaid. One of the things they have done that's new, as you recall, last month, I gave you about a $2.6 million projected impact to us based on the last four years. NISEC being closer to the, working more closely with the state budget office, they've been able to come up with a way to project the costs going forward. Now, our exposure is now as high as 5.6 million, involving, once you factor in this potential goalposts of this floating target. So, they've calculated that for all counties, they have published a fiscal impact calculator, that's the first page in this packet, where you can go and look up any county and what they've calculated the potential impact is, and the one for Swoyo County is anywhere from half a million to 5.6 million. And that's, that's 1% to 11% of our tax limit. So this is why we're fighting this so hard, and why in this kit I gave you, there's sample letters that people could write, we, our own state reps are fully aware of this. So what is in there are the contact information of key legislative leaders, maybe some of the names you don't recognize, but those are the people leading committees that can be contacted, and the sample letters that they have up there are, should be used by you guys, by citizens, by anybody that you want. So, the fight is still going on, I don't know where it's gonna end up, I think it's good news that our federal reps are looking at, holding Albany accountable a little bit, I think it's good that none of the state reps seem to want to pass this, we'll see what happens, because they're still facing a 6.2, 6.1 million short path. Anybody have any questions? Okay, the other, the only other thing I had, I wanted to, is it's more informational, is a couple legislators have called me, and a couple former legislators have called me, because, as you know, there's a new bag law that went into effect in grocery stores, and they're questioning the charges that are being assessed, and asked me to look into it, so I'll share it with everybody in case anybody else is giving the calls. If you recall, state prohibited plastic bags, March 1st, vendors are to use paper bags, or you buy those reusable totes. Paper bags, according to state law, are given to public assistance recipients at no charge. Swoyo County, and the state allowed counties to opt into a five cent per paper bag tax, we decided not to. What precipitated the questions is that many people are being charged 5%, or 5 cents per paper bag in this county, but it's hundreds. That's okay. The way it works is if we had opted in, then the state and the county would get that 5 cents as a, as a tax. If, but, since we opted out, neither the state nor the county get that 5 cents, but the law allows the vendors to charge anything they want for paper bags. So, some of them are charging 5 cents because maybe that's their cost, they're allowed to cover their costs, they're allowed to make money off of it, it's subject to sales tax. The reusable, so what, what the vendors should not be doing, if this comes up, let me know, vendors shouldn't be charging 5 cents for the paper bag and telling the customer it's a tax, because that tax does not exist in Swoyo County. The other question was, are the reusable, reusable totes purchasable with a benefit card? And the best I could find out, well, they are not. There's a provision within the law that was passed, that New York State is going to buy a bunch of reusable totes and distribute them in low-income communities.
Yeah, interior countries have that, right? I'm getting the hot food banks and stuff like that.
Okay, so it started in that county, but it's not statewide yet, so, yes, they can charge for, no, you can't buy with a benefit card. If they charge for it, then you charge whatever they want for a paper bag, so.
But I gotta pay $100 for a reusable bag.
Yeah, right.
Too far down.
Or however much they want.
Whatever they have.
You don't need to. You want to mention the 600 million.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Back on the Medicaid for a moment, the governor's under more pressure now on this Medicaid issue, because the federal government is holding $600 million in Medicaid monies, district monies from the state, so, the phrase I heard is it's made it harder, it's harder on him, and more hard in his position that he wants this, this, this question to occur. But, as I said, it seems most people who are gonna have to vote on it don't want it, so whatever happens with state budget negotiations and three men in a room, you know, we don't know. Hopefully, it'll, it'll be defeated, and we're gonna keep up pressure. They are also organizing a, another lobby day in March 25th in Albany, on the Medicaid issue, to once again hit the state legislature meeting with them before they go on the budget. Will you be there? And if you want me there, I'll go. Will you be there? You want me there, I'll consider it.
Well, I think, I think we should get some people there. I, 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 I'm just coming to support, I don't care, I think we need to be there.
Yeah, I've never seen, I've never seen an issue unite both parties in upstate and downstate like this has. Several counties, us included, are using social media to get messages out, if you're on Twitter, then we created a hashtag called Medicaid Tuesday, because whether you know it or not, our weekly payment goes out on Tuesday, so the counties are tweeting out to the public how much money's leaving their coffers, and going all the, every Tuesday, and using it as an opportunity to educate the public and, and the media about it, so, it's, uh, it's, to be relaxed now with New York City on an issue, you need, but, but it's happening.
You know, keep us informed down there.
Okay.
Go to the field bus together, one day, whatever, to go, by all means, I'd be, I'd be on board for it, so, show some support.
Thank you.
Okay.
I gotta work.
Come on, buddy.
I gotta work.
Okay. Oh, was it the appropriate motion?
Oh, thank you.
Second. First by legislator Walpole, second by legislator Twist. Thank you, everybody, appreciate the meeting. Thank you, everybody, appreciate the meeting.